Some of the criteria considered when you're redistricting, I'm highlighting and bolding population because that is the single biggest criteria you consider particularly in nonpartisan electoral districts. Some other things that you would consider is compactness of the district, making it geographically compact. Geographic considerations, so for example if the interstate ran through your jurisdiction or in some of our jurisdictions in Colorado, if you have a continental divide that you have to go over, for example, you would take those into consideration. Electoral district lines, so keeping precinct lines in mind. For drawing district lines is helpful in the complexity of elections and administration as well as communities of interest. So neighborhoods would be another, would be an example of a community of interest. One of the things that, that some of the considerations that you see at more complicated redistricting processes at the federal or the state level and for partisan elections would be competitiveness. So considering partisan affiliation and certain demographics that play less in municipal district drawing. Some of the things you'll, you might see in more partisan drawing too that I think we should just address. There's a significant amount of case law around this and so we would talk about this in a legal examination. But making things more partisan, there are elements of this. It's called, the image on the left is called packing of a district or cracking of a district. Taking communities of interest, particularly racial or political affiliations and cracking them to either concentrate or dissolve their representation. Another consideration when you're thinking about drawing districts is what we call hijacking. And redistricting puts multiple incumbents going from an all-at-large district like yours, putting multiple incumbents into a single, into the same district to run against each other. Or what we call kidnapping when redistricting puts incumbents. It sounds scary. It's really something that we just talked about, these words, you know. Kidnapping when redistricting puts incumbents residential addresses in really different districts than their base. You being all-at-large, this plays more when you're reconsidering district lines, moving district lines to different ones and encompassing or letting someone go. But it's certainly something to, to consider in criteria and in transition and the type of governance model you approach in redistricting and drawing your lines. And we will discuss that in a future slide. I am a history major, so just for those of you that like history, the source of the word gerrymandering actually comes from the early 19th century. This is Albridge Gerry. He was a signer of the Declaration of Independence. He was a governor of Massachusetts when he drew these lines for the Republican Democratic Party. And that's what it looked like. And in the Boston newspaper at the time, they, that's where the gerrymandering part came from. And that's, you know, you could see, you know, sort of collapsing and grabbing districts is something that you see but is often litigated. You also see a lot of legal liability around that sort of activity as well. But that was the very beginning of it. I'm going to pause here for a second. Any questions around just the process, that particular high-level process of district? Okay. The next part is the governance part and options for creating districts and wards. The first option, of course, is status quo, right? Leaving all districts at large with no wards. I'm sure you can think of some examples of municipalities or towns that leave to mind. I've chosen a few here that are similar in population or representative of sort of that groups to give you some context for some jurisdictions that remain at large. I think you and Boulder are probably the largest jurisdictions that are remaining at all-at-large districts. I would point out that Boulder is now also selecting their mayor through rate choice voting, a different electoral process that's being adopted at the local level here and there. I love to put Edgewater in here. They're in my county and I've worked with them a lot. They're actually a nine-member council district that's all-at-large with that population, but it's in one square mile. So that would, I would say, is one of the more concentrated representation districts that you'll, you'll see in the state. So that's the first option. I keep wanting to do this Facebook and it just doesn't let me. Option two, wards with an at-large mayor. You see this in, as jurisdictions start to grow. One of the considerations, why would you change? Well, as you heard about Boston, I believe in that particular instance, when you're all-at-large and as your population grows, you sometimes see a dilution of representation for certain juris, or parts of your jurisdiction, particularly in urban slash suburban areas that may have different demographics economically or racially. And I think Austin, it was a response to, under the Voting Rights Act, some concerns around all-at-large districts and representation there. But most, it's from a population growth in areas where you're, you're getting a little bit more population and it's becoming increasingly difficult to be representative. And campaigning certainly is one of the elements of that in campaigning at-large for every electoral number. And then finally, option three, hybrid of the two. And you see some examples here. Why is a hybrid model increasing popularity? Well, from a representation perspective, you get the best of both worlds, right? You get the at-large that you guys have now, but you can break down into districts. So for example, breaking your district down into four representatives and districts, two at-large and an at-large mayor, which would be a similar model to some of the ones that you're seeing up, up there, just, just different in scale. Has two, two advantages. One, you're representing by district, so you have representation there. Two, you have at-large districts that then become a sort of nursery or recruitment phase for those that wish to potentially run for mayor at some point. So there's a political component, component there. And then three, it's an attractive model, in my opinion, regarding that hijacking and kidnapping concept around district, drawing district lines. Because you will always have at-large districts for that transition, moving from all-at-large to districts. And so it minimizes the opportunities for hijacking and kidnapping. And it also provides some political opportunities as well as having representation by district. And the choice lies with the elected candidate, elected or candidate. So these are, the, the governance models in my mind are the places and opportunities for you to give some direction or some feedback on creating a plan. Because if we have some direction around the attractiveness of one option or another, it helps to minimize the scope of what we're going to talk about next, the evaluation period, the public engagement and governance. Before moving into that though, I want to pause for any questions or feedback now and we can come back to that direction part in a bit.
I don't see any hands up.
Yeah, I'm going to get them. Are we going to have one?
So we have option three, but I feel like there's a lot of ways to structure that.
I think you're absolutely right. So the, the overriding district conversation is how many seats do you have? And of what nature, right, on the governance? So that's the first decision. Where the lines go is the, the next evaluation phase. And that we'll talk about next, but also how that's configured regarding impacts to staggered terms, right? Term limits would be another piece. And depending on the model, like if you chose the hi, if you said, you know, let's explore the hybrid model, that would give some more flexibility around terms and staggering and implementation timeline, right, timeframe. So all of those would be considerations and how it could look.
Okay, we can keep going also.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay. So the evaluation phase, what does that look like? So first is the policy goals. What does the governance piece look like? How many districts and the, the nature of the districts are, you know, how many are at-large, how many are by district? And then the evaluation after the governance direction is given starts with a legal evaluation. And there's going to be a significant need for charter amendments to address the governance. And what that means is a referred measure to the voters, right? Which would be the ultimate policy decision. That legal evaluation would identify all the necessary changes in advance of a referred measure to voters. The second piece of the legal evaluation, of course, will come after the technical and drawing lines to give checks on that, but also in enacting an ordinance. If the measure, referred measure were to pass, there'd be an enactment phase. I did mention that there's significant case law around how you do this, like what criteria, how you should do this, how you probably shouldn't do it, around legal liability. That upon passage, the enacting ordinance will give you both the legal pieces but also the runway for implementation and what that process will be. Some of the themes around the legal evaluation that, that would need to be done, and this gets to what you were asking, Counselor, is there's a need for establishing residency, for candidacy, and looking at that. Ballot access and signature thresholds for access to the ballot. Transitional language regarding the electoral districts, that's the intersection with those terms and staggering and term, term limits for incumbents. And any other legal considerations that you're turning. Here's the normal disclaimer, I'm not an attorney. But those were some of the overriding themes that we've seen in my experience. Technical evaluation would be the next phase. One is, this is not drawing lines on a map only. There's the evaluation around census tracts, so GIS evaluation. We have staff on hand for that. Evaluating data and criteria for the districts that you're going to establish. The next piece would be timelines, election calendars. What election would you approach for a referred measure? A redistricting timeline. Redistricting requirements will be coordinating with both counties. And, and on the timing of redistricting and re-precincting because it is, again, not just maps, it's a database where we're placing voters into that database and the appropriate newly drawn lines. There may be restrictions on timelines around that implementation, which we can talk about at the implementation phase. Any questions about the evaluations?
Yes. What the, you said something that made me think of, would the districts have to comply with county lines? Because we have two counties.
Yeah, so the question is, would the districts have to comply with county lines? Yes, because there's going to be an electoral district line there anyways. So we would not necessarily create a district that you could have an overlapping district from county to county. You'll have to bring those election results together for that particular district. That would be the consideration to look at. And so depending on where all the other criteria land, population being the most important, we like to try and follow existing district lines, which would include Loud County, but it's not, it's not necessary.
Okay. The other thing, are, are, is there an assumption that if you have three in a district, two at-large, that the three just run from their district, the two run at-large? Because like in Jefferson County, to run for school board, you have to come from an area, but you run at-large, all of you do. When you, when you rotate through, so.
Yeah, so the, the definition for the districts would be geographic residency within that district typically is your eligibility to be a candidate to represent that district. So that's where that residency legal piece would come in. For the at-large, it'd be, be a resident within the entire district of the municipality.
But the people, but the people that are in just the ward, do we have to make a decision if those are the people that just vote on them? Or do they still need to run and have everybody vote on them?
Yeah, so this, this would be, only the people within that district would elect that representative for that particular district. At-large, it would be, they could live anywhere, but everybody votes on them. Does that make sense, Madam Mayor? Is that clear? Different than the county.
Yeah, that's a question I'd have, Pam.
Yeah, it's different than the county.
Could a city adopt the county model if they wanted to?
I don't know that there's any legal restrictions. That'd be a great conversation for the attorney. The only question is, how would, so yeah, that you could have a residency requirement for representation but elected by all groups. It would not get to the same communities of interest representation as, as the district model. But I don't think, I don't think there's any prohibitions on that. And of course, another disadvantage would be you're campaigning for the whole district as the electoral representative, so.
How do you balance the, so two-thirds of our population are Adams, right? But if we did a hybrid, then that means we'll have a lot more wards and Adams than Jeffco if you want to balance population.
So the correlation would be population first. So if you are more largely populated when, if you only drew districts, for example, instead of having at-large districts, right? So you're drawing a map only with districts. If, if depending on the number of districts you have, right? You would have more population because the nature of your entire jurisdiction has more population in one county than another county. So that would be accurate, but it's also accurate now without any district lines. You have more population in your jurisdiction in one particular county than another. So the line itself doesn't change the nature of your population. You're just drawing the line within the middle of it.
But it changes the number of folks who can run in Jeffco if we had just wards? Because there'll be less wards.
If you had just wards. I think that's an accurate statement. Yes. I think that's one reason why the hybrid model is attractive politically for places like Aurora, right? Aurora is represented with some at-large council districts. I think there's three of them, if I remember right, as well as the districts. Because then you get the best of both worlds, right?
Counselor Ireland?
So I'm kind of the one that wanted this and got it on the ballot. Just kind of put it forward, but, so I've analyzed some of it. And I think for election's sake, it's nice to have a hybrid because there's three of us sitting on here now that were at-large. The next election, you could just elect the ones that are in the district. So say we picked eight and us three and there's five districts. So the next election would be just the districts that would run and the three at-large would still be able to serve for four years. And then the next time, it's the at-large. For, so for election's sake, I thought that was the easiest way to go, but.
Yeah, I think, I think it depends on if you're considering terms or also term limits, right? So it just depends on where you draw the timeline, right? So if you're considering those that are eligible for term limits or are termed out, right? And, and so it's also the reason why I think for, from, and I can speak to some of the political piece of it, that why for political consideration for incumbents, that sort of hijacking kidnapping element is, is minimized and because you have options then as an incumbent on whether to run at-large or run at a district for any given election, right?
That's a good point, though.
Okay. All right. The other really important piece in this process is public engagement, of course. How and when and why is certainly a policy decision, decision and up to you. Certainly at the federal and state level redistricting piece, we had an initiative that passed that created a commission. That's a much more complicated and partisan redistricting process. At the local level, we, we've seen more around like a town hall format or a submission of recommendations period, so a submission public input period, a workshop, in other words, putting proposals and letting people reflect on, on those and collecting data and input for the board in advance of, of drawing the maps. Any or all of those options are certainly effective public feedback mechanisms. For the referred measure, of course, you'll have a public hearing that would have the, the more formal public comment period for the proposal. So I think there's two phases that are an effective way to engage the public on the concept of redistricting. And, and what the community feels are communities of interest that are important to them for redistricting. Okay, and then the governance piece. We talked a little bit about the referendum, charter amendment and the need for an election. We'll examine the legal and administrative processes. Timeline is still a bit of a question mark for a couple of reasons. You could, you know, move towards a 2024 charter amendment election. That's, it's certainly November is an eligible election for that. That would need to include all of the analysis evaluation as well as public engagement process. I think my gut here is that's ambitious but doable. Likely the referenda process, when thinking about implementation, if it passes, considerations with the counties will be when it, it will be possible for them to do redistricting and re-precincting in 20. If we were through the charter amendment right now and it had been adopted by the, by the city, we had had the enacting ordinance, 2024 would not be a good year to draw the maps and implement them because there's the presidential primary, the primary and the November election. And taking that data and inputting it into the system, plus auditing that information, that's a really important piece for integrity. Making sure it's all inputted into the county systems appropriately takes some time. And one of the things we need to do is make sure there aren't any restrictions on when precincting can be done for municipalities. There are some restrictions for things like commissioner districts. I, off the top of my head, I'm not aware of any for municipalities. There are practical limitations for that process. So it may be a little bit premature to discuss timeline until the evaluation around governance and what transition might look like. But it's just food for thought to think about for the project. Okay, so now it's time to reflect around the governance thing and Chris, I will kick it back to you on any conversation for that.
So I think counsel tonight, we would seek any feedback that you have on those governance questions. So really that hybrid model or all-district model, certainly appreciate any feedback that you have. And then on the public engagement, I think what Pam mentioned is engagement with drawing district boundaries and identifying communities of interest where we think real engagement could happen with the residents. But we wanted to hear from you as to your, your input on public engagement. So governance at hybrid or districts and then public engagement.
So I've been through this question with the voters twice. So this is, this has actually been around for some time. And I'll tell you, being part of both the councils that put this on the ballot to ask the question, the hesitancy to do something that we say, this is how it should be done, was that the realization that even with seven people, we had no agreement about how it should be done. And each of us were hearing different things from constituents. And I think there was a, at least from my perspective, we didn't want to present that we were trying to gerrymander since you brought up that, that example. I really think that if the, the citizens of the city want this, that their voice is going to be the most important because ultimately they're the ones who are going to have to approve a charter amendment. So for me, I have my personal opinions about how I would do it if it was me. But I, I want to stay true to the fact that we purposely didn't do that when we put this on the ballot because we really want there to be some sort of task force of citizens, however that's picked. I mean, I'm happy to speak on ideas for that, but you know, I really think this needs to be a citizen-driven solution. Because I'm like, like the mayor, like one of the things I always thought was good is if they were elected at-large, I didn't realize how complex that is. But that's how we do our school board members, so. You know, but point being is like I, I have the ways that I think it would be done. I could tell you 10 people who told me 10 different ways that are all, you know, very engaged citizens or former electeds or even former city officials that have an opinion on it. But, so I hope that you guys are prepared to do a very robust outreach to the community because I really feel like that's where it's going to either sink or swim.
Counselor Camerian, did I see your hand?
Yes, well, I was going to give some thoughts on governance, but if we do that, then the points might be moot. But I'll say what my thoughts are for now. So I'm not sure what I am for yet, but my immediate take is that from the folks I've talked to and in my brain as well, Westminster is easily split into three. And so with that said, that would mean like one is both counties. But I also want to throw out some other options other than what I heard, which would be because I think that folks, when I talk about Westminster, say, okay, Westminster is in three parts. That could mean either one person for each ward and then maybe three at-large, which is different than the two at-large. Or it could mean two people in each ward. And I think that that provides an option against what we said for, you know, equalizing the political sphere, for example. I'm just throwing that out as another option. I also had thoughts when we talked about the county lines, which is, it seems that the natural split there would probably be three wards and Adams and two in Jeffco. And then that leads, of course, one at-large position. And I'm just providing all that for food for thought because those are my immediate responses to what I'm seeing, so.
I'm just building on that. I, I would also just ask for a recommendation of best practice. And the, for me, I don't know if that's keeping seven members or if it's expanding to nine in order to accommodate a better distribution and more manageable size of district. Because I, I want to understand, one, what is the best practice for a ward-based council? And from the research I've done, which is narrow, because it's only me, you know, I, I understood it to be a hybrid model. But, you know, would like, again, have the, the pros and cons around that. But also, I'm not tied to just a seven-member council if that's, if it makes, if there's some ideal number for size of a district. So I wanted to throw that out there. With respect to the outreach process, I agree with Counselor Demott that, you know, maybe it does need to be as robust, robust as having, you know, a, I know, I know, you have a lot already going, but an advisory team, a community advisory team, task force, whatever we want to call it. So that's where, but ultimately, I would want community input filtered through best practice, recommended.
I think those are all really good reflections. And I can say, just from a professional perspective, so in my experience, I, I think what's attractive about the hybrid model is what I mentioned before, right? There's, it pays attention to some of the political incumbency components, right? But, but also addresses the need for district representation, right? And communities of interest, which fully at-large doesn't quite get to. Individual districts in two handles the staggered terms and maybe some transition issues. But the, the hybrid model, I think, is But the hybrid model, I think, has been attractive for boards because there's, again, that, those that are, they're drawn to a mayoral leadership position can run for the at-large representation districts, both from a campaign perspective, that has some advantages politically and, but gets you that district. The number, I think, will emerge when it's really important to recognize if you're drawing districts, equal population. And that's going to emerge once we start putting lines for population. You know, you just start looking at lines for population and see where they land. And then communities of interest are overlaid and it's like, that doesn't make sense, you know? And a component around two, two, two for three districts or, you know, three at-large, three districts is more of a governance question. But I think some of that evaluation will emerge. Does it make sense for numbers around community interests to increase? Or do we get there with the three districts on some of the feedback that you've already received? So those are my reflections around that. I think the hybrid model speaks to more of the outcome goals that are traditionally for looking at districts.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the hybrid model to me is, would be my choice, my personal vote. Because it does, it seems to cover the most things. Particularly, you know, one of the things that I care about the most is getting as many people as possible to run for office, right? To have, and campaign financing is one of those areas that limits access to a lot of folks who are considering to run. So hybrid seems to be the best. So that's my personal there. But for community engagement, question for you, did you do Jeffco, the recent redistricting?
No, no, it was the two before, well, yes, as an advisory capacity for county clerks, but.
So they went through this community engagement process that is highly regarded. I think it won some award or something. Where it was tech-enabled. So they basically told the community, hey, they gave them the technology and said, draw, but it's restricted by the criteria, right? So it's built in, the criteria was built in to the tech. And you can draw the districts as two, so that was to redistrict the three commissioners. I would love to see something like that for us where it's built. So that list of criteria that you guys had up there, I think there were five of them. If you build that into something that you can just give to the community and say, hey, and submit, you know, a timeline and stuff, that's the most crowdsourced way of doing it versus having a town hall where you might get 30 people show up or something. This gives everyone access to come up with something that they think would work. And we can look at this large file of, you know, of submissions. But that was a really cool process, though. That would be my vote to follow what Jeffco did last year.
I always just want to ask other state counselors if you think it's good to ask all the citizens, what kind do they want? Do they want hybrid or, you know, all a district? Or do we as a council want to decide that and then take it to them to figure that out?
I think it's important for them to understand what each one of those means. So that they know what they're voting for.
Yeah, you know, I'm a little torn on this because I do think it's a governance thing. And I do think that where the lines go typically are, it rises to a level of priority for an electorate and for population. It's not just the electorate, you're representing not just voters, right? In your given districts. And so I think, you know, one of, like, I think our discussion is a little bit symbolic. It is hard to come to a decision unless you're reflecting back on a proposal. And so I tend to think that saying, you know what, it makes sense, let's explore this. So I'm gonna say hybrid model because I think that's what we've discussed the most. But let's explore hybrid model, do some evaluation, and let's reflect on that and get some feedback on that. And I'm certain we'll get, you know, if there's feedback to say, I think this should just be districts, there should be no at-large, right? We could incorporate that feedback in, in advance of proposal for a referred measure. But in my experience, it'll be easier to have the discussion with you and the public when you're reflecting back on a thing, right? So a map with lines that are defined and that scope is also more efficient.
You're all right.
I need eyes in the back of my head.
Bad seat. With that being said, like, one of the things you brought up was about the, you know, it might look different with districting. So I think what would be useful probably to this body is starting to see that drawn out because that is, I mean, it kind of answers some of these questions in some fashion. Because, you know, to me, there definitely is that line of effective governance where if we got much above nine-person council, I think you'd have a mess on your hands. But, you know, I don't know what that looks like to your point because I know there's a lot of legalities around how the lines are laid out. But with that also, would it be possible to, because I don't disagree with you, that it would be nice to have something to look at, which has always been one of the challenges with the way we try to put it on the ballot. But we, you know, strongly believed about, you know, it not being our decision. So is it possible for you to come back with some options, that way that it would work? To look at the lines and say, this hybrid would work? Or, you know, this true ward system would work? Because in my mind, and this is just my view of it, is like, I like Thornton's model because you always have a tenured counselor in each ward. And so having two per ward that are offset is appealing to me as a resident because that means that I don't have the green rookie counselor, no offense to new people. But that's, I mean, that is different to have somebody who's been here for a couple of years when you're specifically trying to advocate for things in that particular community. You know, but, so, I mean, even with the hybrid, that doesn't really address that in my mind because you might not have somebody who cares about that particular area as much as another area, even if they're at-large, especially, you know, just the way that it's laid out. So point being, if we could get that drawn and have a couple of options of what a hybrid model versus a, you know, award model looks like, that might be helpful in going out to the public and having a couple of options for them to weigh in on versus us saying, oh, this looks good to us.
Yeah, I think certainly anything, drawing lines on a map, anything is possible, right? And so you're working from totally at-large blank slate. One of the things that just, this is just a brainstorm, but one of the things that left to me when you talked about increasing representation, setting aside all the practical considerations around that, I'm looking at staff. And getting to sort of what you're talking about, counselor. When you think about drawing lines, you could think about it from this way. Where the lines go, so the number of districts probably is the more defining thing. So three districts, right? You could put two representatives in each district and then increase your seats to two at-large and draw a hybrid model and say, this is the number of seats we have, but here's the lines on three districts, right? So thinking through that, you're still, the districts are going to be the districts. The number of representatives and representation is based on the model. So the key, the key question is, if it's only districts, we'll start looking at population and communities of interest. Is it three or four? Is, you know, what type of openness are you thinking about around the number of districts piece? I guess it's probably better to hone in on than the number of representatives and where they are, whether they're residential or at-large. Is that, does that make sense? It's probably more of a good governance conversation to have at this point, so.
I was just gonna add on to that, just to say, well, maybe we can establish some guidelines for if we want to have the representation component, but the sort of staggering and experience thing, so that might push us in some examples to have a nine-seat council versus a seven. Like, you could play with a couple of different, like, this one meets these guidelines a little bit more or these valleys a little bit more and these, you know.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I mean, but that's the thing, so like, you could hypothetically say you split it to four. You could grow it to nine, being the mayor one, and then still have two per ward and still have them offsetting. Or you could do three and have two offsetting and leave the council the size it is. Or you could increase, do three, increase it to, I mean, there's so many different combinations because then you could do, add two at-large so that you have that component still, but still have staggered wards. So, I mean, but I think those are like three good examples of what that might look like to say, you know, bring back some semblance of, you know, doing three or four wards. I couldn't imagine doing more than that, I mean, but.
Counselor Ireland.
Well, just the plan that I laid out has five wards. So there's four, I mean, five, one in each district and three at-large, and then the mayor. So it's even a different scenario, but.
I do think, I do think when we start looking at population and communities of interest.
And it's by county.
So I think I have enough feedback for moving to an evaluation phase and understanding that how important and entirely agreeing how important that public engagement piece will be and what that could look like. I think we do have a lot of good best practices and examples to come back for engagement, both for you and the citizens, to come back for feedback and start looking at some plans and continuing an iterative process for a project plan.
And those are the choices that you had up there on the policy side, that's later? Like term limits and things like that?
Yes, so we'll do, the staff's already started and your city attorneys already started doing evaluation around charter and language and things that need to be talked about and addressed in, that would be, you would be touching in a district conversation. The incumbency and term limits, we already know, right? We, you all know when you're term limited and what those terms are. And so we already have that information.
Yeah, but we, but, so we have two four-year, so it's just based on what the state allows, but we haven't changed it. So if there's a gap in between, you can keep running. If there's a four-year gap, I'd like to see term limits, actual term limits, where we set a cap or at least have that discussion on very term limits.
So I don't know that that's a part of this project. I think that's certainly something we could look at separately from the wards discussion.
But it was mentioned in there?
So that, I'm sorry if I can, if I had any confusion on there. The terms would be, if term limits existed in your jurisdiction, how would impact incumbency in a transition? Yeah, not whether or not term limits exist or not. I'm sorry for.
So we cannot have a term limit discussion in this project?
You have, you have term limits? So eliminating term limits is the conversation? So you have.
Setting a hard cap is the conversation.
So I believe that you have term limits in this jurisdiction. It would require a vote to eliminate or extend term limits.
I'm not trying to extend, I'm trying to say that if there are gaps in between, so it's two four-year terms, but if there's a four-year gap in between, it doesn't count. So what I'm just trying to say is we need to set a cap on how many years someone can run.
Separate charter amendment, wouldn't it be?
There might be a problem with that, getting people to run. That's the only thing, like, some people like to run for office, others do not, so.
About now, campaign finance.
And campaign finance, I would like to talk about that.
Need anything else from us?
I think, I think, Chris, you feel good? Project manager. Yeah, I feel great. I hope this was a useful conversation. I look forward to continuing to talk about it. And any feedback you want to share with Chris will pass right along. Appreciate the opportunity to work with you on this project.
Thanks for being here.
Sorry it's so late.
Thank you.
Next.
Next, okay, Mayor, we've got some updated recommended positions on legislation. And so wanted to kind of pitch those to you. So, Mr. Lindsay, could you go ahead?
Mr. Frytag. So city staff has drafted a position on House Bill 24-1230 concerning protections for property owners with respect to improvements to real property. And despite the long title, this is really about construction defects. Legislation is about construction defects, something that we talked about the last, the last time around. This piece of legislation would actually make it, we believe, would make it more difficult to build condominiums with some of the requirements that would be put in place around construction defect litigation standards and requirements. City staff is asking that we take an opposed position on this piece of legislation.
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Up.
Hands up, thumbs up.
Can you further define, there's three different bills I know of that are around construction defects. Can you further define which one this is for me?
This is a bad one. I'm willing to say it. This is a bad one.
So.
Takes us back to the original stuff.
All right, so this is 12, House Bill 1230. The one that council supported previously is.
Question my memory.
This evening, I would say this one, the reason we're seeking, excuse me, this one is active and we're wanting to move forward on this position. So we're a little more concerned about this one.
So 24-106 is the one.
Senate Bill 106 is the one that council already supported.
So I saw four fingers.
So this is to agree with the staff to oppose it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I agree.
Got five, six. You're done.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, council asked about the airport legislation. That's House Bill 1235, which city council supported.
1235.
Right, thank you. That passed the House Transportation, Housing and Local Government Committee. And it's been referred to the House Finance Committee, so that bill is moving forward. And then I did want to return, we mentioned it in the, in the agenda memo. At the March 4th city council study session, staff was asked about House Bill 24-1304, the minimum parking requirements. And after consultation with the city's lobbyist, Ms. Atwood, we do not recommend taking a position on that bill this time because there are conflicts with that bill and Bill, House Bill 24-1313, housing and transit-oriented communities. And we believe that those bills will take place. The changes to those bills will continue to take place unless there's not a reason to take a position on the minimum parking requirements bill right now. And that's all I have.
I was just.
Dr. Cog ultimately opposed it. It was kind of a mixed bag, but.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations on being the fastest part of our night.
Yes.
High five.
Good stars, sorry that everybody had to wait so.
Thank you all.
So next topic, Mayor, is discussion regarding Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail of Rocky Flats. Counselor Azadi had asked for this. We provided some background material and agenda materials, but really wanted to start out with Counselor Azadi's reason for the discussion, if you would.
Yeah, so this is, as you heard earlier, we're developing a land around contaminated Rocky Flats site. It's significant environmental and health concerns. This overpass, this bridge and. This overpass, this bridge and underpass um project is, I think, a big concern. I think what I'd like to ask for is um to get to what Council Camilli was getting to earlier. I think we've heard all the background and data, I won't rehash everything again, but I'll say it's dangerous. Um, so until we learn more, what I'd like to request is a balanced presentation, study session. And I'd like us to pause until we have that. I don't want us to continue the project and with, because there's so many questions unanswered. One of which is what's our responsibility within the IGA to maintain that piece? Um, how much money are we paying into the Federal Lands Access Program grant? What's our uh, so the Broomefield piece, when they got out of it, they were able to get some of their money back or they were trying to get some of the money back that they had invested. We don't even know what kind of liability we have. If we do get out, how much will we be on the hold for, on the hook for and and so forth? There there are a lot of questions financially that I have. Um, health-wise, there's a ton more questions that are unanswered regarding methodology of the testing, the modeling that was used versus real empirical evidence. Um, the radiation standards are not protective. Uh, and there is this regulatory capture, right, where, which means when, so the the regu- the CD-PHE, they are funded, or they, I think it's two hundred thousand dollars a year from the Department of E- of of Energy. So there's a conflict of interest there that, I'm not saying that they're making things up. What I'm saying is there are a lot of ways of testing things and the methods that have been used by federal agencies are not, um, well, there are con- there are contested perspectives on how real real evidence can be tested or not. Um, and then there's the school concerns, right, the community concerns, you've heard them all. But the fact that there are seven school districts, including Westminster Public Schools, that don't allow field trips to the area. I I I think it would be immoral uh to continue without knowing more. So I'm requesting a pause, a study session to be set up where we can get all the agencies, get them all in there, the wildlife, um DOE, CD-PHE, but then get the other side, right? These expert scientists to come in. Um, we've heard them already, but I would like that to be more of a, you know, back to, you know, in the same presentation, not separate presentations. Um, so that's my request to my colleagues.
Joe, come on up to the table.
Okay. Sorry, I thought I could. Thought I could sit to the rest of my back.
Mayor, if I could real quick, um, I've got a question to ask Joe, because I think as we talked about in the uh in the normal council meeting, you know, the the kind of long fall in intent is this bridge is being built off-site. Uh, and when is it planned to be installed?
So at, right now, the the bridge part of this project is actually being managed, I I believe I misspoke, right, by um Federal Highway Administration. That's who's doing it in conjunction with the US Department of Transportation. They are under contract and the construction is ongoing, engineering's been done, the the site testing has been done. We, they had originally planned on putting it in sometime in the spring. We are personally, we have, Westminster has requested not to do it before August because our burning owl is there. And so we want to be outside that disturbance window during construction time.
So.
So we're looking, the earliest is August.
August, so we've got some time, I think that's the the good news. Um, because as we talked internally during the break session, there's a whole lot of questions to your point about how much money have we put into this? What are the legal authorities for pulling out of an IGA? You know, if we pull out of the IGA, is that a sunk cost that we've just spent X amount of dollars and there's nothing to show for it? You know, and then on one side, you've got, you know, the the folks that are opposed to uh any continuation in Rocky Flats. You've got others that say it's not a problem. And so I just think that if we have some time, which it sounds like we do, um, before the council work would be to ask any uh or make any decisions. And so I think we've got the opportunity to study this a little bit more intently.
Okay, but if we want to talk about health and safety and the two sides have their trails ready to go, people have to cross the street, literally. They're going to have to go in traffic to cross there, how safe is that?
I personally wouldn't play Frogger across Indiana.
But people are going to.
Yes.
And what I would say is that the the safety long-term outweighs, from a public health standpoint, outweighs the, by, because by establishing that bridge and the underpass, it normalizes and and legitimizes more folks to actually come into there. And that, to me, outweighs, the the risk of that outweighs the potential risk of people crossing the road.
And to me, people have a decision to make. They choose to go on there or not. I choose not to go on there, but other people choose to go on there, so.
But if no one knows, right, so I mean, we don't educate.
They do know, they.
People don't know.
They know that that trail's ready to go, yes, they do.
No, no, what I'm saying is they don't know about the risk, the Rocky Flats risk, no one knows about that.
Oh, yes, they.
Very few do.
I don't know about that. I'm, Rocky Flats isn't like some new thing, I mean.
I mean, if you talk to any young person.
New people don't know.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know about it.
No one knows about it. Only folks that have been here thirty years know about that.
I just think the signage for me would be a good idea.
Signage would be a great idea.
But I don't know who's maintaining this path after we completed it, who's maintaining it?
So the maintenance of the trail on Westminster property is our responsibility. The bridge itself, management of that bridge would be, we would enter into another agreement, but Fish and Wildlife has stated that there'll be the ma- major repairs, we'll do the day-to-day graffiti removal, the the sweeping, that sort of stuff.
Far, how much path do we have to maintain?
New path?
Yeah.
Uh, what we're talking about, the the trail actually exists today, the Greenway Trail dead ends right now up on Broomefield. There's there's another four hundred yards basically to get from where it ends now to the fence line. That trail exists, it's just a smaller scale trail, so we'd be widening that. So additional trail mileage is negligible. We're we're talking about another four hundred yards of crusher fine trail in addition to the several miles that we already maintain of the Greenway Trail. The Greenway Trail extends all the way through Stanley Lake. It it's, it starts at the Rocky Mountain Arse, so it hits our our boundaries, excuse me, just outside of Stanley Lake and continues through.
When I was here before, they really talked about, as they built this stuff up, um, having the signs to share the history so people know, are those out there or are they not out there?
They're not out there yet, that is still part of the packet.
Okay.
That is part of the requirement there. There are signs, so the only ac- public access right now into the Rocky Flats areas is the trail access off of one twenty-eight. So there is an existing trailhead off of one twenty-eight, public can get in, mountain bike hike now. There is signage there, there will be signage on all the crossings.
Right, okay.
Can I just ask, um, for the crossing where we would have the bridge, um, instead of just saying like pick your way to die, um, could we potentially have a um, some alternatives that would be proposed, like, I don't know, a stop sign or, you know, like something to speed mitigation, um, that's actually effective instead of just a bridge?
So there there, again, there will be educational signs, that's part of the the grant. The city of Westminster owns the property, I'd say we can do whatever we want on our property in terms of signage and information.
Well, no, it's not, not about signage, I'm talking about instead of the bridge.
Oh.
That, instead of just not having a bridge, right? That we are instead saying, here's an alternative, we're going to put a stop sign here. And or, you know, like.
On Indiana.
On Indiana.
Different controls on Indiana. Who controls Indiana, is it CDOT or Jefferson County?
It's the state.
I'm not sure, I believe it's a state road, it's unincorporated county road, but I believe that CDOT is.
So then CDOT would have um proponenty for any traffic improvements or changes to that.
Is there a crosswalk there?
Yeah. We know those people, we could talk to them.
Sure, no, we we certainly could talk, we just don't have the final say.
Yeah.
So I I think more details about the bridge would be helpful to inform this decision. Um, and I think that there's going to need to be some research, because Mr. Rayal was indicating that I think we are just one of the funding agencies for this bridge. And Jefferson County is another, the federal grant is another source of funds. But as part of this process, I think Jefferson County bought the land that the bridge is going to sit on. So the bridge, uh even on the east side of Indiana, is going to sit on land that Jefferson County bought and has a reverter clause. I think, Joe, did they deed the land to us?
We, the, I want to say it's two thousand nineteen, eighteen, off the top of my head. Jefferson County did the negotiation with Fueman Creek Reservoir, who was the property owner. They purchased that property. And in our transaction on the city side of it, it was specifically, we were engaging in this for the completion of the trail. City paid for half of the cost, so it was a one point six million dollar purchase, give or take ten percent, please. Um, and the cost was split directly in half between Jefferson County and the city. The county actually did the transaction, the county bought the land, then deeded it over to us. The, that deed does include that standard Jefferson County reverter clause in it.
I think we'd want to understand options relative to Jefferson County helping to fund that land acquisition and what rights they might retain in that land through that reverter clause. And, you know, the the construction of the bridge, if it's ongoing by federal oversight, uh I'd want to know what our options are as a city to impact that bridge's completion. Um, and whether we might face some responsibility if we tried to stop the construction of the bridge as a, and a party that's already agreed to fund it through this IGA. So just want you to have all the information to inform your decision.
If I hear what you're saying, right, potentially, even if we pulled our money out, they might have the land and the money to put the bridge there anyway.
That's possible.
So I I would agree that I would want to know the full scope of of what options actually are, because maybe we don't have options we were sitting here debating about.
Counsel Irwin.
We know how much our portion of the bridge is, like how much is Westminster paying for that bridge?
I don't have it right in front of me, I can tell you it's, we are, we are part of the matching funds for the grant. The bulk of the bridge is being.
Grant money.
By the Federal Lands Access Program grant, which Jefferson County is the grant holder. We are a partner to Jefferson County. I want to say that we're 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 less than two hundred thousand was our total commitment to the grant. And I think it's closer to a hundred thousand. We have paid some of that already and we we are act- we have actually incurred liability, they they've done some of the work that we are.
Just one other follow-up I could, the total cost of the bridge, Mr. Joe?
I don't know the total cost to pull out the bridge, so the bid packet that went out includes both the bridge and the underpass. And it's somewhere between three point eight and five million dollars for that total. I can share that whole bid packet with you.
And the underpass is between the uh the flats.
Between.
Under one twenty-eighth. To Boulder County.
So the underpass is certainly more than a bridge, because we're we're having to dig down in that dirt to make the underpass.
The underpass is not really, it's not our part of the project, that's the Boulder County, Boulder City, but it's all part of the, it's one grant that funded those crossings simultaneously.
It's a different crossing. Uh, Counsel Razzotti?
So to my understanding, the, so when Broomefield was part of it, there were six, right? And when they pulled out, it had to be renegot- the IGA had to be renegotiated, which put more cost on the remaining five folks. Is that true?
Yes, so Fe- February of twenty-one, so the original, the original agreement, the 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 six bodies that agreed all agreed conditionally. And the condition was that we would perform a soil analysis plan, that we would go out and do an independent testing of the soil. Those results came back at the end of twenty twenty, um, they were presented here to the council, to all the councils and all the various boards in twenty twenty-one. At that point, Broomefield did withdraw from the plan. They they had some obligations, their obligation to the grant was then divided up among the remaining uh communities.
And they pulled out because those soil samples showed five times the level, is that true?
I I don't think it's appropriate for me to sit here and and say why Broomefield did their actions. What I can say is um environmental analytics, the company, engineering analytics, the company that did the independent testing, their findings show that the risk there was consistent with the EPA and state's CD-PHE standards for safe recreation. That was the findings of EA.
Yeah, the the letter that we received and from talking with Mayor Castriata, because she was there, she led this effort to pull out. Um, it was five times the level and that was too concerning for them and they had to jump out, which then spread the cost to the remaining five. I don't think that's safe and that's why I'd like to, so but the, so the one piece, though, the improvement, you you, I think you mentioned that earlier, that there's an improvement piece still happening. So the trail is done, but there's a piece of it that's getting improved or something, what is that?
So with, so the original Greenway Trail, this this project started in twenty sixteen, it started before I got to the city. The Greenway Trail was built and because Broomefield was a partner at that time, they dead-ended the trail of Broomefield. So because now Broomefield's not a partner, that last little bit needs to be refigured onto our property. That trail, if you've walked out the western half of Westminster Hills, you know, it's a wide crusher fine uh ten-foot wide trail that curves onto Broomefield. On our property, that trail does continue in in a straight line to the fence. That needs to be upgraded to the ten-foot wide standard, it is only a three-foot wide triangle there. That's the improvement that still has to take place on our property.
When is that happen?
That will happen at the same time the bridge is going to go in, there's no.
So August? So nothing's happening from now to August?
There is no work planned.
And one of the concerns I have too is for our workers, the folks who are actually doing this, not just that improvement, but in general, there are standards, so digging into this soil, right, is very da- very dangerous. And there are OSHA standards that they need to comply with. I'm curious, as when we have this study session, if we can talk more about the actual work itself and how we're protecting, you know, PPE gear and all that kind of stuff as folks are building this out and putting it in place and doing these improvements, because that's a big concern too.
So that work is contracted up, it won't be city staff doing that. And one of the add-ons that this council and the the other councils added in February was to include air monitoring during the construction period. So when that bridge is going in, when those, that trail section is being constructed, there is air quality monitoring that was included into that.
And this has been kind of a question I've probably brought up a few times on different topics, but I would love to know what the cost to the city is to have air monitoring in different locations around the city, such as this one, just in general. So um if we could get a staff feedback on what is that, what does that look like?
Air monitoring plus interpretation.
You're right.
As I have learned, it is, you need to interpret it correctly.
So we've got, I I think we got.
Oh, go ahead.
If we're going to do a study session, so I wasn't here in twenty sixteen, so this was underway, but we certainly, I was here as well as, I think at least four of us, we're probably here when this came back in twenty-one. Um, I'd like to rehear the why staff said this was okay, because certainly that's what former council and our council would have taken into consideration is, you know, what those role, results were from our staff's perspective, not somebody else's staff. So I'd like to make sure that we get that um as part of whatever study session, because I think that would be appropriate.
Whatever those historical agenda documents would be.
Thank you.
I see no more hands.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Counsel, we we know we've got between now and no later than August to come back with a study session and uh and a plausible. to come back with a study session and, uh, and a plausible, reasonable way forward.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Executive session.
Thanks, Joe.
We've got just six minutes to finish before tomorrow.
You guys can do this.